Welcome, everyone, to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for October 7. We're going to start tonight with approval of meeting minutes for September 2nd, 3rd, 11th, and 29th.
Move approval of the minutes of September 2nd.
You want to do them all at once?
I have no problem doing them all at once.
2nd, 3rd, 11th, and 29th.
Move approval of meetings for September 2nd, September 3rd, and would you say the 11th, 29th?
11th and 29th.
11th and 29th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Next item is our future meeting dates. We're meeting on October 21st, which is two weeks from tonight, and we're scheduled to meet also on the 27th and 28th prior to the town meeting on those nights. What time should we post a notice for? 6:30?
What time is the town meeting?
Let's say 6:30. Network Dennis?
What time is town meeting?
7:30.
Yeah, 6:30.
Okay. The next item is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
I'll move approval of the current payroll and vendor warrants. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens speak. Do we have anyone here tonight who would like to address the board at Citizens' seat? No one. Okay. Moving on, do we want to go to the grant next?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move up item number 19 on our agenda, which is a meeting with Joe Lynch, our DPW director regarding a grant, and then we will go to the RCN ascertainment hearing. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening. Pick up. I'll see microphones.
Wait there.
Microphones.
Yes.
Rare that they come here with great news, but I guess the rarity ended 11 months ago when we came with a grant application prospect for stormwater management. We had formed a collaborative with 12 other communities headed up by the Napa River Watershed Association and MRPC. It was 11 months later, and we were eligible for a second round grant application. We're applying for it again, and I would ask the selectmen to have to hear a brief presentation from me to embrace the application and to authorize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to sign our grant application as a local participant. You've been hearing me talk for years, and my predecessors before me probably, about this NIPD, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. Over the past nine years, we've operated under a five-year permit. Yes, I said nine years for a five-year permit, meaning it expired four years ago, and they've been concurrently running one-year extensions on the prior permit. The new draft permit has now just come out. The concerns are sweeping changes in the new permit. They're there. With those sweeping changes, a great burdens on what it is cities and towns across the entire state and across the entire nation have to do, and more importantly, the financial burdens that each of these communities are going to have to bear is an unfunded federal mandate. So, the consortium that we formed last year, we applied for a community initiative challenge grant. We got it, and the initiative was to collaborate, look at those things that we could do together, rather than each single town do many of those aspects on their own and incur those costs. We looked at a way to collaborate and minimize those costs. Also, in that first phase, two communities were singled out as possible communities to conduct a pilot program, looking at the affordability of stormwater and what the impact might be in that community. Out of those two communities, we were one. In the end, we were the only one who moved forward with that pilot. A lot of the data that was compiled and analyzed through that process were things that I, in fact, used in the five-year forecast that's included in Ms. Vagan's report that will be coming to you guys at a future date. The second phase in the application speaks to those communities, meaning us, would also participate in another phase, and that's looking at the affordability. So, now that you know what it might cost to do it, what other tools that might be available in those communities, creating a stormwater utility, perhaps enterprising it, just doing it on a tax basis, doing it on an override, and analyzed what all of those options might be. So, among all those other things that we'll be looking at in the grant, which is regionalization of all these new requirements, some of the things we can do collectively, we also have the direct targeted benefit of getting this free consulting service by being a successful first-round pilot. It's a competitive grant, highly competitive. We were successful last year. I think the approach we used last year is what kicked us into the eligibility for this year, and I anticipate pretty good confidence that we're going to be successful again.
How many cities and towns?
Excuse me?
How many cities and towns?
12 total communities.
Okay.
Mostly towns, and then Boston. We don't know, Boston's still within our region, and where they abut us, we actually do have intermunicipal agreements. You may remember that of selectmen's.
Right, yep.
Having signed that, that we work with them on some of the border issues, identifying inflow and infiltration sources and illicit discharges of stormwater into source and source into stormwater.
So, is this collaborative just an identifying kind of thing, or is it?
No.
Or is that actually going to pay for?
There's some things, some actual work that's being done. The first phase was mostly, you know, identifying what was happening in the first permit requirements and how the communities were measuring up on those, and of those things, what could you do together? Things like public education, producing key segments, producing mass mailing flyers, you know, things that are required that each single community were doing on their own. It's just burdensome and costly. The second grant that we're applying for now looks at all of those far more onerous requirements on top of what was already required and looking to collaborate amongst the group of how you can carry those out as well.
Just go into what a little of those are, just so we get.
I was going to say, it's still esoteric. The draft had just got released last Thursday.
Okay.
It's hundreds of pages of reading of our Federal Register sort of stuff, very, very, very tough. We've been involved in a lot of the, you know, ramping up stuff over these past few years. The most alarming things are communities with TMDLs, Total Maximum Daily Loads of Pollutants we are in for phosphorus and for bacteria in the Napa River watershed. We have to have dry weather sampling and wet weather sampling of all outfalls and all tributaries into those outfalls. So, just the collection of samples and the analysis of those samples are tens of thousands of dollars unfunded. I did preface by saying I'm headed with good news grant application. The bad news is if you look at what we have been doing in stormwater, we're doing about $320,000, $325,000 a year in stormwater work under the old permit that we're already funding. The forecast of what we will need, Milton will be needing to do when this new permit goes into effect, 1.2 million every year. Public comment period, it's going to be a 90-day public comment period guaranteed. It's going to become 180-day public comment period, and I will be shocked if a year from this point.
They're still talking about it.
They're still talking about it. It'll probably get passed just at the turn of the next federal election cycle. It's very, very onerous, and it has national implications, not just Milton.
Is there a consortium trying to fight the unfunded mandate at this point, or, I mean, even though you say next election cycle, that's not that far away.
No, it isn't at all. That's what I'm saying. I won't be surprised that next year we'll be having this conversation.
We can barely afford the $500,000 we do now.
Well, we should be doing about $500,000. We're doing about $325,000.
Right.
Right. It's a long way out, it's a long battle. You know, whether the actual permit passes muster at the public comment period or not, we don't know. There was a preliminary draft permit issued about 18 months ago, and it went nowhere. This has now been issued. New Hampshire's is out. Ours, Massachusetts, is now out, and Vermont's will be coming out this week.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, EPA is now gathering some momentum that this thing is getting out in a bigger fashion.
And the other thing you mentioned was a stormwater utility. How could that work?
Much like water and sewer, you could enterprise it or you could not. How it would work is you could, and again, way premature, some of the things you could look at is come up with some equation where you look at contribution of stormwater, which is a factor of runoff.
Right.
So, take impervious surfaces, roofs, pavements, patios, pools, and whatnot.
For people's property.
People's properties as a percentage of the total, and some equitable analysis of what their contributory factor is. Give bonuses perhaps for LIDs, low-impact development techniques. Give bonuses for open space preservation. There are things that you can consider, and as a way to equitably spread out the cost of stormwater on some measurable basis of what their contribution of the runoff actually is.
But isn't the city and town the biggest contributor because of the roads and runoff?
I just, I think we're probably, as a single entity?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Probably. Yeah, but, you know, we would probably equal to, you know, it's hard to say because of the Blue Hills being so open.
Mm-hmm.
It's hard to factor in, but I think we would probably be, I haven't done the analysis, but we'd be pretty high up as probably the biggest. But there are a lot of private property owners as well that would have to get factored in. The other things that we do have, in fact, though, is we sweep our streets, we clean our catch bases, we clean our lines, we maintain our systems, and most private entities don't. So, again, you asked the question, those are the types of things with a utility to look at.
Right.
Stay tuned. The second phase of what the tools are, that's exactly the grant we're looking at, is those types of things that are available.
Okay.
So, it's 150,000 total application, $100,000 looking to come through the grant itself. There's $50,000 they're looking to raise through local contributions. Last year, we made a similar contribution of $5,000 towards the grant. It was that match that made us competitive, so we're hoping to make the same match, and that is included within my stormwater budget. I can afford that $5,000.
I'll move to participate in a collaborative effort to limit the costs and increase the effectiveness of stormwater programs by participating in the FY14 Community Innovation Challenge Grant process and authorize the town administrator to sign all pertinent paperwork on behalf of the board. Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much. Just, I was remiss in not saying that the grant is actually, it's a state, Comalt, Massachusetts Grant, through the governor's economic development and environmental initiatives. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Sorry. All right. The next item on our agenda is an RCN ascertainment hearing. This is a public hearing, and thanks to the town administrator, I have a script I'm supposed to read. Before I do, I will just disclose for the record, my employer does some work for RCN, but not this particular RCN, an affiliate of this company that's before us tonight, and not in the area of licensing, and not anything that has anything to do with Milton. So, we will, I will now open the public ascertainment hearing for the purpose of reviewing the performance of one of our current cable television operators in Milton, RCN BicoCom LLC. During its current license term, enter here testimony on future cable-related needs and interests of the Milton community. Notice of tonight's hearing has been duly published in the Milton Times on September 18th and September 25th, 2014. Tonight's hearing is mandated by the renewal provisions of the Federal Cable Act. The current cable television license held by RCN BicoCom Inc., or LLC, will expire on November 1st, 2015. The town is currently involved in the federally required ascertainment process. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to, number one, identify future cable-related community needs and interests, and, number two, review the performance of RCN under its current cable television license. Once the town has gathered community input, it will forward the results to RCN in what amounts to a request for proposal, or RFP. This RFP will inform RCN of the kinds of services and facilities that the town expects will be provided during any possible renewal term. Thus, the testimony that the public may give this evening is very important, and I encourage all of you to speak candidly and specifically about any cable-related matters. Anyone who would wish to speak must come up and provide testimony in order for your views to count and to be a part of the official record. When you come up to speak, please give your name and address. Because this is an ascertainment hearing for the town, we ask that you not pose direct questions for RCN to answer. All testimony and/or inquiries should be directed to the Board of Selectmen. And finally, we would like to clarify that while this is an ascertainment hearing on cable television matters, there are two related subjects over which the Board of Selectmen has no authority to regulate. The first is the rates that RCN charges for its services. The second is the commercial programming that RCN chooses to show on its cable systems. We realize that these are two important issues for cable subscribers, and while people are certainly free to comment on these matters this evening, it's important for everyone to realize that the selectmen cannot mandate specific rates that RCN can charge, nor can the selectmen mandate commercial programming that RCN carries on its Milton cable system. So, with these introductory comments, we will now open the hearing to comments and testimony from the public. Please come up to the microphones at the table to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board during the ascertainment hearing? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't intend to do this, but I guess since I'm the only one, then I feel that I need to do it. My name is Leslie Frank. I am at 32 Pagoda Street, and I've lived here my entire life. I have used RCN since 2010, and I hate to see Milton lose the ability for competition and our ability to choose who our cable provider will be. I have had numerous problems with RCN's billing program. However, we've always managed to get through that part of it. I think the service itself is very good. I've never had any problems with the actual service itself. It's solely with their billing department. That being said, I think, you know, we've all had experiences with different billing companies, and there's always its ups and downs. But in the end, I've weighed whether or not I wanted to use a different provider, and what, you know, I did my checks and balances, my due diligence, and when it got down to the bottom line, all of the services were same except for the price. And RCN is considerably, in my opinion, less expensive than the competition offered in Milton, and I would hate to see us lose the ability to receive a good service at a lower cost. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board regarding RCN? Then, seeing no one else, I believe we have a representative of RCN who will be here to make a statement. I'm told Thomas Steele Jr., the Vice President and Regulatory Counsel. Good evening, Mr. Steele.
Good evening.
Hello.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you. My name is Thomas K. Steele Jr., Vice President and Regulatory Counsel for RCN. Been with RCN since they first came to Boston Market back in 1990 or something, '97. We had a slow start here in Milton. We had a franchise rented in 2000. We had a little pause in 2001, and then we picked it up again in 2007. So, we've really been here for about eight years. Thank you for the remarks from one of our customers. We appreciate that greatly. I would say this about our customer service. In 2010, our company was sold to a local investment firm, Abrey Partners here in Boston, Mass. And one of the first things that the Abrey folks did was invest in customer service, and they took, what we had done over the years for cost savings and other reasons was outsource a number of our customer service responsibilities. We brought it back in. We hired a couple of hundred people out here in Massachusetts, but in Pennsylvania, to do the customer service more thoroughly and locally. It's worked out well. I think our customer service has improved immensely, including our billing, and so we're pleased with that development. But we're about a year away here in terms of the expiration date being November of 2015, which you said in your opening remarks. So, I was here to listen and primarily to see who I would be talking to over the next year and hear any concerns that you might have as a board or anything that you might want me to particularly focus on. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
I do have one. I understand right now RCN is, does not, or is not able to service the entire town. There are parts of the town that are not reachable.
I know that will be one of the primary issues that we'll talk about during the next year, and we pass about 6,000 of the, I say it's roughly 9,000 homes.
Mm.
Passed 6,000, but there's 3,000 that we don't. It's, we're primarily in a more densely populated northern part of the city and not so much in the southern, where it's less populated. We have a provision in our existing franchise, our cable license, which gives us, you know, sort of relief from having to do homes in an underground area if the cost is too great. But that's something we'll take a close look at. I know you'll have questions about that. I'll be detailed in my reporting as to where we serve and where we don't, and that'll be a focus of the next year.
Okay, great. Any other comments or questions?
I'm outside. Moment, I don't.
I don't have any, any either. So, is there anything else that you'd like to add, Mr. Steele?
Oh, I think what I'll do is just leave. It's been a good night so far.
Okay. Well, then, if there's no further testimony, that concludes tonight's public hearing. We will keep tonight's hearing open for 14 days in order to receive additional testimony. Interested parties are encouraged to submit written testimony on any renewal-related issue discussed tonight or indeed regarding any cable-related issue. Written testimony or comments may be submitted to the Board of Selectmen's office by October 22nd, 2014, and those comments should be directed to the Board of Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, 525 Canton Avenue, Milton, Mass., 02186. If you have questions about tonight's hearing or the cable television renewal process, please call the Board of Selectmen's office at 617-898-4848. And thank you for attending tonight's public ascertainment hearing. I will ask the town administrator, I neglected to mention at the beginning, if she would like to address the status of the Broadband Monitoring Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, for the listening public out there, mention that our Broadband Monitoring Committee has a number of vacancies. We have advertised in the Milton Times two or three times now, looking for volunteers to be appointed to our Broadband Monitoring Committee. So, if anyone is listening out there that would like to volunteer, we'd certainly love to have you come on board.
Is that committee active right now?
The committee is not active at this time.
Only one member?
There's only one member at this time on the committee.
How long has there been one member?
Quite a while.
About two years now.
The term has expired, but the committee just isn't active.
Yeah, the committee has not been disbanded, but the term has expired. But we have done outreach. We have it on our website. We've, like I say, advertised it in the Milton Times. So, we are looking for volunteers that would be interested in serving on that committee.
What's entailed? Will it be specified what's entailed?
Yes. When they call the office, we'll send them out all the information that's entailed in being on the committee, what the committee's charge is, what the role is of the committee. It's more to look at the town's cabling system, the telephone systems, the Internet, all things to do with IT.
Okay.
Okay. Then, we will move on to our next item, which is a presentation by our Pilot Committee, Payman in Lieu of Taxes, and we are joined by just a couple of members of the committee. Would you gentlemen like to come up and join us? Chair and a member, I'll let you introduce yourselves.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Dimitri Petion, and I'm the chairman of the Pilot Committee. With me is Jim Henderson, and also other members of the Pilot Committee consist of Dennis, Kyhan, Stephen Paxia, Robert Gatner.
Steve's here.
Hank Bell.
Steve Hugh.
Gallo Jones.
And Peter Healy, current president of Milton Hospital. Our committee came together a few months ago to look at the idea of payment in lieu of taxes for various nonprofits that are currently operating in town. Forty-one percent of Milton's total land area is tax exempt. If that volume of land was to be taxed, we're looking at approximately $582 million in valuation. Off that $582 million in valuation.
Can we get a straightaway?
We have approximately $104 million that's represented by.
It's slideshow.
Can you do it the slideshow? Yeah. Next one.
You can play it up.
I think it's the first one. The second one, I mean.
Sorry, Dimitri, we'll get this.
Yeah.
No problem. Thank you very much. Next slide, please.
So, if we look at the volume of land area that's tax exempt, so we're looking at a total of $582 million, and we have $104 million of that that's occupied by state and town land. The remaining $478 million is occupied by other charitable entities in town. Next slide, please.
Now, when you say $582 million, that is the potential tax revenue? Or is that the assessed value?
That's the assessed value.
Okay.
So, if we're looking at the total grouping of charitable entities in town, we can put them into three different categories. We have those organizations that are less than or equal to $5 million. We have those organizations that have valuation between $5 and $15 million, and we have organizations that are nonprofits in the community that are bigger than, larger than $15 million inside. The majority of the nonprofits that are currently operating in town falls under the $5 million category. We have the second tier of nonprofits based on the last valuation that was done by the assessors. There are four organizations that are between $5 and $15 million. Those organizations are Boston Council Boy Scouts, Congregation of Sisters of St. Joseph, Font Barn Academy, Cunningham, and Laborey College. The next grouping of organizations represent more than half of the $478 million in potential tax revenue. Those four organizations are all organizations that are greater than or equal to $15 million in potential tax revenue.
Tax value.
Tax value.
Assessed value, I'm sorry.
We have Milton Academy, which is $106 million. Curry College, $90 million. Milton Hospital, $76 million. We have the Roman Catholic Charisus of Boston, which is $23.7 million. If we look at the archdiocese, off that $23 million, there are currently $4 million that's being taxed.
Okay. I just wanted to add something here. These values represent the values for FY14. We're in the process with going through the revaluation, and part of the work with Patriot Properties, we are going to all the nonprofits and doing a reassessment, a revaluation of their properties, and we're finding that, especially in the case of Curry College, there is significantly more value there than what we had on the rolls. And it's not unusual because it's tax exempt, there's not a whole lot of attention been paid in the past to their valuation. So, Curry actually is probably, based on the preliminary numbers, is around $175 million right now with their new construction and everything being put in.
Next slide, please. There's a heavy reliance on property tax in the town of Milton. Property tax constitutes over two-thirds of town revenue, and residential properties represent 94% of the total taxes, and if we look at the commercial base, that only represents 6%. Current state aid is decreasing. We have no other major source of revenue in town other than property taxes. So, we jokingly say Milton is a perfect storm in the making. There's a heavy reliance on property tax revenue, residential covering 94% of the town's need. If we compare that to communities such as Boston, Boston residential property only represent 38% of the total revenue. Milton average tax bill is in the top 10 of the state. Significant portion of our tax base is exempt. Under preposition two and a half, the remaining taxable base can only grow by two and a half percent per year, and as we all know, that's below what our current. And as we all know, that's below what our current needs are. The nonprofits that currently function in town certainly offers great benefit to the community that they're in. We have nonprofits that provide education to our kids. We have nonprofits, healthcare and medical research. We have various cultural institutions in town. We have nonprofits that provide care for the poor, the handicapped, and some of them potential economic generators. Unlike other communities, we don't benefit from certain value. The town is not in position to tax on payroll or provide a sales tax, i.e., with regard to the students that are at Curry, or the employees, or tourism in town. There is often a disconnect between the services that are provided by the nonprofit and the benefit to the community that the services provide in. Some benefits that are provided by nonprofits are seen by the local town, some are provided to the state. There are benefits that are more regional in nature, and there are those that provide benefits that are more global in nature. For example, kids who come to Curry or Milton Academy are not just from Milton, they're coming from other communities where they're receiving a benefit in the town of Milton. The majority of the costs associated with the benefits that's provided by these nonprofits in terms of their tax exempt status is picked up by the residents of Milton. As we said, 94% of the town revenues derive from residential taxes for services such as snow removal, street cleaning, et cetera. Key questions facing the town are, how much would each institution pay in property taxes if exempt properties were taxable? How does each institution's pilot compare to taxes on exempt property? We know we have some existing pilot program in town, but we need to look at all of them to see how well they compare. So due to scarce resources, as Jim has alluded to before, the assessors have not generated accurate assessment for tax exempt properties. Using statutory authorities, the assessors are currently obtaining detailed information on nonprofit-owned properties, the size, the plan, the usage, et cetera. This information, in combination with that from the current ongoing townwide evaluation, will be used to value all town tax exempt property. So we need to look at the new information and see how we can really, truly use the new information to develop true valuation for current holding for these nonprofits If we look at some of the major nonprofits in town, if those nonprofits were being taxed at the current commercial rate, nonprofits such as Curry, Milton Academy, Milton Hospital would generate roughly $6.3 million in revenue for the town. Total town levy is 67.2, so we would be looking at almost 10% of the town levy being generated by those nonprofits. Payment in lieu of taxes for the major nonprofits currently in town total roughly $150,000, or 2.4% of what these institutions would be paying if they were on the normal tax roll. Next slide, please.
Ma'am, can I ask?
Go ahead.
Dimitri, how many, how many nonprofits made up the $150,000 in pilot payments?
That was Milton, I'm sorry, Curry College is around $60,000. And then there are institutions like Milton Academy that have certain properties that would be eligible, residential properties that would be eligible to be exempt because of use. They chose not to take it off the tax roll. So when you add that in and then other payments, it comes in to roughly $150,000. And there's a couple of other institutions that pay in. But Curry definitely is leading with $60,000 if they've been paying.
Is Fuller Village part of that?
It's part of...
Is Fuller Village part of that 200?
Fuller Village...
They're tax pay, yeah, but they are a nonprofit, and they would be eligible for exemption.
No, they're not eligible for exemption. They're a nonprofit. In order to be eligible for the tax exemption, property tax exemption, you have to be, have both ownership and use. So they're nonprofit, but the use of the property is not in accordance with the charitable classification. So therefore, they can't be exempt.
Okay, even though they're affordable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even still. And that's kind of unusual, because you look at both places, and they do consume services, public safety, and streets, and fire, and police, et cetera. But, you know, one is paying, and Curry down the street is not. And there's a new school that's going in in Braintree, and I know a counselor there, and I said, "Aren't you afraid it's going to go off the tax roll?" He goes, "No, it's a private school." So because it's not, it's not a charitable, tax-exempt school, they are actually paying taxes. So the rules here are kind of, some qualify and some don't. But I think the bottom line here is that there are constituents in this town, and they do consume services, specifically public safety and road use, et cetera.
I know, for example, I think it's the Wake, is it the Wakefield Estate?
Yes.
They pay about $15,000 a year? Is there any similar properties out there that just are paying nothing? Or most, most tax-exempt are paying nothing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, here again, you talk about monetary dollars, but I'm sure others are doing some, you know, services and lower taxes. They have programs that they offer for the town, et cetera.
I think that's the key thing we're looking at, is organizations that are offering benefits to the community, the community needs to factor that under consideration. But for organizations that are not necessarily offering benefits directly impact the community, then that needs to be considered as well. The Milton Pilot Committee recommendation, the committee recommends that the town of Milton adopts a pilot policy similar to current policies adopted by communities such as Boston, Brookline, and Andover, with minor adjustments to meet the needs of the town. We look for the program, pilot program to remain voluntary. Legal or statutory requirements to contribute to a pilot runs counter to the spirit of the partnership between the town and its nonprofit institution. So we would like for the program to continue to be a voluntary program. Pilot program should be encouraged, and all nonprofits in the community should be encouraged to participate in some sort of a pilot. All nonprofit that owns tax-exempt real estate should contribute to the pilot program, not just the medical or the educational institution. So we have nonprofits that offer in the arts. We know that it's difficult to get those nonprofits to actively participate, but we believe there should be participation at that level as well. Allowances should be made for those religious organizations. We believe religious organizations should be excluded from the pilot. And all organization owning property value at at least $5 million should be included in the pilot program. The pilot program should be based on the value of nonprofit tax-exempt properties reflecting the size and quality of the real estate holding. Base pilot should be 25% of what the institution property would generate if fully taxed, reflecting consumption of essential town services, fire, police, et cetera. Nonprofits should receive up to 50% pilot deduction for community benefits. We need to recognize the significant in-kind contribution made by Milton charitable organizations. We should provide incentives to support the programs that directly benefit the residents of the town. In case of exceptional opportunities, the 50% cap can be exceeded. So if we have an organization that is doing great service for the community, we need to factor that into consideration. For example, if the hospital wanted to do a flu clinic and vaccinate the population, elderly population in town for your charge, then we should give them full credit for that type of service, because that's a direct community benefit.
I think it's, if we could back up for a moment, you know, with the religious organizations, it should be noted that, and I think, Jim, you did a great job, and with St. Pius, for example, you know, St. Pius is my church, it's on four acres, but their rectory was on eight acres. And it was all tax exempt, and it was, you know, vacant for many, many years. So, you know, when it went back on the, on the tax roll, it started bringing in over 30 grand a year in taxes. And now it's subsequently been sold to a builder, but these are the kind of things that we should be looking out for going forward as well, you know? Is there any nonprofit organization out there that is not using their property for what they're being tax exempt for?
I would say no. The part of the process is every nonprofit files a Form 3 ABC each year with the assessors' office to state what their use of the property is. And we periodically find property that might not be eligible to meet the criteria, so it would come off the tax roll. So you mentioned that on St. Pius, there was, there were actually two parcels there that we brought back on.
That's right.
But now they're contesting that, which they have a right to do. So that's, I think that's one area that we always will focus on. But I think that this area, because of the situation in Milton, where we have such a large number of tax exempt, I mean, you look at Waymouth, Salsiu Hospital, Braintree, Thayer, Stonehill is in Easton, well, we have all three of those in a town, and it does have a major impact on the other taxpayers. Because everything that's not paid by the nonprofits basically gets absorbed by the taxpayers. So it could be anywhere 10% to 15% of your tax bill represents revenues that aren't coming in from these tax-exempt sources. And I'm not saying they should be fully taxable, but I think we arrived at the 25% factor looking at Brookline, looking at Boston, where they said this represents what it would be for police and fire, and for roads, et cetera. And that was a number that seems to be consistently used out there. And I think it's something that's warranted. I mean, I showed this to Dimitri, you look at the front page of the Times, you have Firespace Needs Committee regroups after funding issues. There's no money to repair firehouses that actually should have been repaired 50 years ago. And then the next column, you say, "Police Curry reacts swiftly to campus attacks." Now, we should be over there helping them, that's our duty, it's part of the town. But, you know, there should be something for part of the effort. And I think Curry does, they are honoring their pilot payment, pilot agreement. But if you look at what they're paying, it's roughly 5% of what it would be if we used the Boston or the Brookline formula. So it's a relatively small amount, and they've added $75 million in new property onto the campus, but that doesn't even count in their calculation in what they pay us. So things are coming on and being exempt, but, you know, we still have to provide those services with more students there, and this doesn't have an impact on that. So I think the pilot policy, if we come up with one, would be something that we can use and apply evenly across the town for all the nonprofits, rather than having, you know, separate agreements that might not work or might not actually, you know, hold muster.
So continuing with the community benefits, criteria that we have looked at to be considered for community benefit is that the organization has to be providing a service that directly benefit town of Milton residents. The organization must, has to support the town's mission and priorities, has to offer the town and nonprofit can collaborate to meet share gold. Services should be quantifiable. Town must be consistent and transparent in its approach, so institutions can plan appropriately. We recommend a phase-in period for a pilot policy. Our recommendation is that pilot program be phased in over a five-year period. The institutions will require time to make the necessary adjustments in their budget and financial plans to accommodate increased pilot amount. Or for those who are not currently paying a pilot, they will need to start planning another debt, so that they can begin to pay it. Institution will receive tax credit or pilot credit for the amount of any real estate tax paid on properties that would ordinarily qualify for tax exempt based on use. An example would be a residential use, residents use as a dormitory that are left on the tax roll. Former commercial office space that remain on the tax roll and is owned and occupied by a charitable organization.
Have you determined that there is such property out there?
There are current properties that have been left on the tax roll by various charitable organizations in town. There are...
Milton Academy.
Milton Academy has some residences that have been left on the tax roll that are used for dormitories. Milton Hospital has their office, commercial, doctors' building.
The doctors' offices are taxed just because they, well, they have to be taxed, they're not normally exempt. But, so there is a contribution coming in from them for that area.
Any questions?
Yeah, first question is, I mean, it was, it was good to see we had Milton Hospital represented on, on the committee, and I think that is very good. It's too bad we didn't have, you know, and I know we did reach out, we just weren't able to get other nonprofits to, to join in. But have you tried to reach out to any of these nonprofits in terms of what some of the thoughts are? And, because, I mean, the biggest concern is, it's a voluntary program, you need kind of broad-based buy-in. And do you feel that we're going to get that kind of buy-in? And how do we sell it to them?
Well, I talked, there's a gentleman that Bill Clark referred me to, Steve Cirillo, who's over in Brookline. And apparently, he's the guru in this area, even before Matt Englander in Boston.
Right.
And he, talking to him, he said, "Listen," he goes, "I've been doing this since 1999, and it's not a 50-yard dash, it's a marathon. It's going to take some time to get people." He said, "In Brookline, they have Children's Hospital, they have Beaver Country Day School, they have BU." So they have made strong, great inroads into this area. I think the biggest thing that we have, and I wish he was here tonight, is Peter Healy on the board, because he's a very active member, he has a lot of insight. And if you notice in Boston, that Beth Israel in Boston was one of the leaders on that committee in Boston, and they were one of the early ones to sign on. And of the hospitals, they're making a very, very significant contribution in Boston. And I would, I would be totally shocked if they would not, you know, participate. And I think when, once you get one or two, especially a heavy movie like that, participating, I think that over time, you'll get others who, to participate. And whether they pull in the full amount or whatever, I just think that we need to, them to understand that it's a partnership, they're stakeholders, and they can and should participate in this process and join us at the table. So I would expect others to, to come forward as, as time goes on.
But I think importantly, the Board of Selectmen factors into getting those folks to participate as well. One other thing that Boston did was to put together a group or a subset of their pilot committee that went out and proactively interact with these institutions to ensure that, one, they understood why the community was providing a, putting together a pilot program, two, the importance of the nonprofits to proactively participate in the pilot program. What this committee, understanding the, the current structure around this committee, we didn't have the authority... we didn't have the authority of the, of the Board of Selectmen as of yet to go out and directly engage the various nonprofits in town to, one, go out to the presentation to them in terms of why they should participate in the pilot, in the pilot program and, and the importance of them being good corporate citizens and being a, a part of our community.
I was just going to ask you about the next steps that you might recommend. Is that something you've discussed as a committee, whether that would be a recommendation to the board? Forming a subset and that would engage with nonprofits?
What we've been looking at as a community is twofold. One is drafting a pilot policy that the board can look at and, and vote to adopt, but also along the way in parallel, being provided the opportunity to go out and reach out to these various nonprofits in town, at least a group, if nothing else, the group that's above $15 million to go out and interact with them and to get more participation. We know that there are certain nonprofits in town that feels that they're providing great benefit to the community by virtue of physically being in the community. And we, we like to work with those nonprofits to help them understand what the needs of the community are and how they can be true partners in what we're trying to do.
So in terms of next steps, are you drafting that policy now? Is your, is your committee going to continue meeting?
The committee will continue to meet. And this was a, we wanted to come out and provide it, provide this body with a status update in terms of the research that we have done and what direction we're going towards. And the direction that we're going towards is based on our recommendation that we should have a pilot policy for the town of Milton. And that pilot policy should be fairly uniform so that all nonprofit entities in the community have an understanding as to what it is and they can participate.
So I guess you're looking to us for some feedback on this presentation, maybe even from members of the public who are watching on TV.
I personally think the, the policy does make a lot of sense. I mean, it seems to be fair and would certainly provide more revenue to the town. I mean, it's logical, clearly.
It's proven that it, it worked in other towns.
Right, right. And I, and I suppose as, you know, as a board of selectmen, it may be difficult, but I think you're right, over a period of time, if you get a couple of the big players to, to buy into the program, then others will follow. But even as, as new nonprofits come into the community, I, I think that's where we can be proactive, that's where the planning board can be proactive in terms of letting those nonprofits know that we do have a pilot program and, and that we really encourage, you know, all of our nonprofits to, to support it.
I like the fact that you're looking not just to the largest institutions, but also to some of the mid-sized institutions among the three tiers that you started off talking about. That mid-tier seems like it would be a good group to approach also as part of the engagement and as part of the policy.
Yeah. Well, that was one of Peter's comments. I mean, originally I was just looking at the big three, you know, being a numbers guy, you'd say, you know, just knock off the giants. But as he talked, I said, you know, this makes sense. Everybody should be engaged in the process. And, and while they might not have all the resources that, you know, a Curry or Milton Academy have, they still have resources that they can, they can provide to the town, even if it's not cash, other things that they can do and be part of, you know, the process, which I think is, is, is something that we should strive for.
And I think the other thing is, as we looked at other communities that had pilot programs in place, when we looked at towns like Brookline and Endover, what we saw was the fact that they were willing to go down to start between four and $5 million to ensure that. They were casting a relatively wide net to get everyone to participate. There are a lot of small organizations in town, nonprofits, that are providing tremendous service to the constituents of this town and they should be able to participate and brag about how much service that they're providing to the community.
Yeah.
So I guess we should, well, you're, you're going to continue to meet and if members of the viewing public have comments, they can probably submit them to one of us and we can get them to you, Dimitri, as Chair of the Pilot Committee.
Yeah, that would be great.
And I guess from, from our standpoint, we just look forward to eventually the committee coming forward to us with a, with a plan that, you know, that we can look forward to adopting.
Yes.
And I'll give periodic updates to the board as well.
That would be great, Dennis.
Yep.
Well, thanks to this committee for all your work.
Thank you.
A lot of information. Thank you.
Dimitri, it's Jim.
Sure.
I do want to say that I did attend some of these meetings and the amount of work that Dimitri and Jim and Steve Paxia and Rob Gatnick have put into it is phenomenal.
And Hank Bell. Yeah, quite a lot of members on this committee. Thank you all. Okay, we have, we're going to move up the MPEG report next. We have several members of the MPEG board and the MPEG administration here, so we will skip over number eight and go on to number nine and then we'll, we'll resume. So Mike Lynch is the Executive Director of MPEG. And if any members of the board would like to come up, whatever your preference is. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Thanks. For the viewing audience at home, for those of you who don't know me, I am Michael Lynch, the Executive Director for Milton Access TV. I do have several board members in the audience that I'd just like to recognize. We have our President Bernie Lynch, we have our Secretary LOLs, and we have James G. Mullin, Jr., a member. We also have a few of our board members watching from home. And I'm here tonight to present to you our annual report for the year 2013. And I believe you have your binders and we can just go through section by section if you prefer. I also, I do have, before we begin, I have two items that I apologize I did not include in your report that I can pass around. One is a set of meeting minutes that we can talk about at the end. And the other is our audited financial statements for the year 2012, which I do, I was reviewing the report today and I do apologize that they were not included for you to review beforehand, but I have.
2012 or 13?
2012. I have four.
13's not done yet or?
No.
Okay.
So for our, our annual report is comprised of nine parts. Our first part is a copy of our most recent PC form that we file at the State of Massachusetts. I will say that in 2013 and in 14, we did have a reorganization of our accounting system and our bookkeeping software. That's why our 2013 financials are still being drafted and completed. We hope to have those by the end of this week. I tried to have them for this meeting. So that's in your tab A. That's our, a pretty generic form that we fill out for the state. Now, I don't know if any, if there's any questions, we can just take them as we go for.
Okay.
Section B, our financial statements audited. And again, that's what you just received today. And they are for the year 2012. They are, we hope to have our 13 report to you by the end of the week. The third section of our report goes into our budget that we create every year. It's combined. We have our previous year's budget and expenditures. We have our current year budget and then we have a three-year budget proposal outlined for you. We are funded through the board of selectmen through our contract. The contract is funded through Comcast. So the town receives 4.35% of the cable revenues in the town of Milton. And it's split up that the town keeps 0.35%, so we are budgeted with 4% of the revenues in the town of Milton, which each year varies depending on if Comcast has any bundles out there where customers can bundle to save money or if they offer different specials. So our funding usually sits around $320,000 a year. So I can walk you through our budget if you'd like. We do have two cable operators in the town of Milton, Comcast and RCN. The way the contracts have been written is that we receive 4% from Comcast, we don't receive any funding from RCN. So I've outlined on the first page, last year, we budgeted for $275,000, we received 255. And I will note that that was, there was an accounting error from previous years, so we had an overpayment in 2011 and 12, which was deducted from our 2013 payments. And going forward for 14 and 15 and 16, you can see our, our budget projections there. We also, part of our revenue we earn through video sales, so we offer a service to the community where residents can purchase DVDs of any shows or meetings that they would like to view at their own leisure.
Mike, can you, can you tell us that, why there is such a difference between the 2013 actual budget and the 2014 proposal?
So in 2013, I should say prior to 2013, it was discovered there was an accounting error that determined our, our budget. So in 2013, we were actually pretty much short one half of our payment. And in 2014, the, the subscriber base in Milton for Comcast has been increasing. So that's why in 14, there seems to be a big, big jump, but if you look at 2013, really should have been about $320,000.
So where was the, where's the 2012?
So that would be in the, the 2012 annual report. But I can tell you that the, I can certainly look and get back to you, but the 2012 numbers were.
So just so I know, and so this 2013 budget of 275, that really should have been 320, is it?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But we did adjust our budget down when the overpayment was discovered. That's our funding. I don't know if the board wishes to go through the individual categories of the budget.
I, I guess what does confuse me a little bit, Mike, is, and I understand these are just compiled financial statements for 13, but when you look at 13's revenue on the financial statements, it's 357,000.
Where's that, Tom?
On the compiled financial statements for 2013, it's in tab.
Oh, what tab is it in?
So now those revenues are 357,000. There's a huge receivable from the town of Milton, which I don't know why, but $180,000 receivable, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense either, but, but then when you compare it to the, the 2013 either budget or actual number, it's considerably less. And I just didn't understand why.
Tom, you're looking at page two. Second house receivable, 179.
Yeah, 179. And then page three is the, the revenues and, and expenses.
357.
Yeah. I'll have to get clarification from our, the auditor and our accountant. There might have been a typo, I'm not exactly sure, but I can have a report on that at the next.
Right, and even the, even the year before, the audited financial statements have 341,000 in access fee income. But again, that could have been before the correction of that error too, that's possible.
Okay, yeah, I will, I'll get clarification from.
Okay.
Our audit company and our accountant. Any other questions on parts of the budget before I go into the next section?
The only other question I did have on the budget, kind of looking down it, was the, the 2013 equipment capitalized of, well, 88,000, 83,500 was the budget number and 66,340 was the actual. And again, looking at the financials, the, if you looked at page four on those unaudited financials.
What tab, Tom?
The increase in equipment was $11,749, not 66,000. Like you said, I'll preface this by saying these are unaudited financials, these are...
We have the audited ones now.
But not for 13.
Oh, that's right.
So I didn't, I didn't understand where the difference came from there, that, that these 2013 financials don't show very much increase at all in capital outlay where your, your budget and actual.
Show that there was.
Yeah, yeah.
So Mike, is that something you can chalk with your?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just get back to us on those.
Yep, I can, I can have those questions answered.
Thank you.
So moving on from the budget part of my report, on tab F, we're required to report on our hours of programming by the categories of cable cast. I did give a three-year history just so that we could see that we really are working to expand all categories of our programming. In 2011, for instance, we started with 1,700 hours of public programming and in 2013, we increased that to 3,300 hours of programming. And across all three cable cast categories, the programming hours have increased. And just as an example, the next page shows you a current program guide that we produce to show you some of the programs that we have running and to show you that our schedule really runs from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM Monday through, I'm sorry, Saturday through Sunday. We really try and fill up the schedule and not have any dead air on there.
How much is it, how much of this program is programming from within the town as opposed to purchased or, I forget what you call it.
So I can, in the next tab, I can go over, we're going to go over our current programming and what comes from other towns.
Okay, great.
And I can explain that.
Okay.
So our next section of the report, section G, is just notable events, actions and programs of 2013. So we started 2013, we reported was another action-filled year for us. We built out the Coward Blue Conference Room, which is located in the town hall. And that increased the, the quality of programming and the amount of programming that will be coming out of the Blue Room. We are using it for planning boards and we're using a remote setup, which is basically anything that we use for programming and for broadcast, we would have to bring in and set up by ourselves. And it really was presenting some problems. So in 2013, with the permission of the selectmen...